We have a couple flags we can look at, so.
Oh.
So I guess I'm just gonna stand and look in the front light. I can maybe see it well, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for all coming. Attendances, uh, we have everybody here this evening, so thank you for all coming. Um, approval of agenda? Y'all got a copy of the agenda? Imagine that's supposed to say a zoning ordinance regulate solar energy systems? Regular?
Yeah.
I, I do have a couple things um, down at the very end, um, I got a, a letter from Waynefield Township. I just want everybody to know about that, I'll be through that in a little bit. And after our approval, I'd like to just um, talk about nine eleven just for a minute, so. With that being said, um, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for meeting tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Um, public comments for agenda items only. How about public comments for the public? Anyone? Hearing none, then I'll close public comments. Uh, July seventeenth meeting minutes, if y'all have a copy of those in front of you. On the zoning report, um, there's um, uh, there's a, there's a comment here at the very end that talks about, um, and Dave, I think you were talking about light. And must be, maybe you have a camper on lakefront property, um, do you have a complaint on that?
There was, yes, but it's not there now.
Okay.
I sent the people off letters stating they can't do it. Can't leave the property.
And then the comment on the other side? Does that need to be there? Because I'll ask the commissioner. Maybe that doesn't. So. Yeah. So um, I'd like to make a motion then to um, remove those two sentences from the meeting minutes.
One second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Um, I have a, a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes from the July seventeenth meeting, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion carried. Um, board update, uh, Dave Berman.
Um, we're meeting on Monday, we hired a township assessor, Andy Ross. Only told us until, I think until Monday night to look over a few of those ones, but that's okay. He's good with that and he's married to an assessor.
Very good, um, Dave Kelsey, update?
Okay, last month we had a, a permit for ninety seven fifty nine North Lake Road that's for dwelling at seventy seven seventy one North Greenville Road. It's a home and a garage and a pole barn, and they're gonna remove the old home and barn. And seventy six eighty two North Greenville Road, a storage building. I issued another ticket on seven twenty six and twenty four for an ongoing uh, light violation. It's one one five eight nine June number, so um, hell, they had one for the rest a while back. I think that's been straightened out. I don't know if he uh, paid up the fees, but I've checked with the county courts and see where that stands now. That's all.
Very good. Um, just um, one thing I guess I did, I didn't talk about was um, a moment of silence. I'd just like to do a moment of silence just for a few minutes or a few minutes or so, um, for nine eleven. You know, twenty three years ago today in the morning of, um, we had some terrible things happen and a lot of people lost their lives. And uh, um, something we should always remember, and it's really amazing is I drove here today that um, there was somebody on the radio talking about it that was born, that was twenty four years old, that doesn't, you know, didn't live through some of the things that we lived through during that time period and uh, what a tragedy that we had. So if I can just get a moment of silence just for a few seconds here. Thank you. Um, Ryan and Patricia Buckholz?
Yes.
Um, would like to talk a little bit about um, um, a situation that uh, that we're gonna talk about and we have been talking about as a, as a, as a commission, so I'm gonna leave the floor to you.
Okay, one of us is gonna talk because the other one is shot. Um, my name is Ron Buckholz, my wife Patricia. We've been married forty four years and have been entrepreneurs our whole life. Just wanna give you a brief back, background. We were born and raised in Michigan. Our life was, we lived to the fullest and enjoyed everything, the fruits of our labor. And we searched uh, for a lakefront uh, cottage or house on a small lake in Michigan when we came back to Michigan. And it took us two months and we finally found the one on Townline, um, that George and Pam Baronwell owned. Um, it's on Cutler and uh, it's on the south end of Townline Lake. Uh, we, we moved in in November and uh, I can't tell you uh, how excited and how much joy it got to us, but just because for one thing, our lifelong dream was to own a lake house. The other thing that was probably the most important is that we have a four year old and seven year old grandson. And I mean, all we have spent countless hours on Townline. We bought a boat, we bought a home, we put improvements into the home. We've cleaned up and just done some more plantings and such for the, the outside and made it our home. And uh, like I said, the amount of time that we've been afforded to enjoy that lake with our, our grandkids has been, and our inner kid, has been uh, just, it's probably the biggest thing we've had happen for a long, long time. So, the problem came up and out of nowhere, I mean, we had talked to the owner of the lots next to us because previously he had owned all four lots and two of the lots was where the house sat on and then the other two lots they kept. And we had talked to him when we bought it, we found out his name, we ended up, you know, calling him, asking for goodbye. And he says, not really interested, and I said, fine. And uh, then he came up and introduced himself during the springtime of this year and said, hey, and you know, here's who I, I am, I, you know, I wanna see what the house looks like inside. It's been a long time or whatever. And we just asked him again, hey, we really like to buy one of those two lots because for one thing, I don't want anybody building on it, but if they're gonna build on it, that'd be great, but I'd rather just hold it so I have a legacy for my kids. And we only have one child of our own and we have the two grandkids, so it's like a perfect thing. And he said at that time, no, he's not, not interested, he's got other people that are looking at it. And I said, well, keep us in mind. He goes, we don't use it that much, we just come up, maybe when we hunt or something, we might mess around, but that's all we've been doing for years. And I said, okay. So, on the uh, July twenty seventh, we're outside and it's a Friday, I believe, Friday or Saturday. And when we hear a truck outside and, and drives a thirty some foot RV and parks it right on the lot and puts it on a, an angle as like the lot being this way and our house being this way, he aims it so it's aiming not towards the lake, but like right into our living room and our kitchen area, right into our house. And um, the girl that was with the guy came over and she said, well, I'm the granddaughter and uh, you know, we're just up here for the day and we'll be out of here. And I said, cool, okay, no problem. And three days later, they finally left, but they left the trailer also just sitting there and running the AC or generator and um, and took off. And we didn't know where, you know, we really didn't know how to contact them, so I went to Dave Kelsey and find out what exactly is the zoning for leaving a RV camper trailer on a unimproved lakefront lot. And that's where this whole debacle began and it took us down a rabbit hole of, there's not that much writing about this, the three point two eight section that's in the zoning ordinance. The very first thing it talks about is storage of RVs. It does not talk about camping or anything like that. And it, it first starts and talks about, um, you know, you have to have a certain uh, lot that has certain dimensions and certain, it has to have a back and a front and a side. And well, we have a lake for the front, so I, it, it doesn't fit for storing of, of an RV to begin with. Then the second part of it says, um, but if you have an RV and you want to, say you come home from a trip and you wanna park it on, on, on your lot and unload it and unload it, you got forty eight hours to do it, you know, okay? Um, again, this is a vacant lot, not a residential lot, so this is really not in the spirit of what this whole uh, ordinance was written in and all, but it makes reference to having the RV parked behind a, a building, uh, you know, so it's out of sight basically. Um, and then it also says on the third point that uh, the person can leave, can live in or do housekeeping for fourteen days in a calendar year. And I don't, that has nothing to do one way or the other with storage, so I don't understand where that, how that ever got in the section. So there, our question is, you know, we've had a shock, okay, so we, we reached out to Dave. He wrote them up for the fourteen day thing because they did leave it there. On and off, they were back and forth, they came, the last time they came here was Labor Day weekend. And um, that weekend, I mean, we've had like five trucks, we've had a lot of drinking, we've had people, like the two women actually were a little bit lit and were like dropping F-bomb out there and talking and I'm just looking at it like, where are my kids, where are my grandkids? I mean, this is like our house and we are like so close to this vacant lot. And so the problem I have and we have is there's a problem that we don't have any kind of regulations that really specifically uh, address camping, okay? And, and I think we have a campground right behind us, Townline Lake Campground, which is, Josh runs it excellent, we don't have any problems with anybody back there, they're very friendly. I think he polices it well and there's never been any issues and they're directly behind me. So for me to have an issue with what's going on right next door to me, uh, that's been kind of just offensive all summer and uh, kinda ruined our, our first summer at the lake. And I did, I did ask the man, you know, if he could please move the trailer so it wasn't aiming right into our house. And he said, I said, wouldn't you rather look at the lake? I mean, your lake, you know, I mean, on the lake. And he said, no, I um, I like it where it's at. And I said, okay, okay, fine, that's, yeah, so that's great. And he goes, actually, he says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna plan on probably keeping it here all year round. And I said, well, well, I don't know about that, but you know, we'll have to see. And so, we went through the ordinances and we found out there's, there's no clarity, I guess, for something like this. And maybe it's because, I don't know how many vacant lots there actually are on Cato Township's part of Townline Lake that somebody other than the owner of the adjacent property owns. So it's kind of a anomaly, I guess I would say, but the problem I'm having is we're, it's being treated as a campground and we are actually a residential lakefront home. And my neighbors have written letters, um, friends have written letters. We've got a lot of people that talk to us about and don't agree with the way it was handled, but really he had, his hands were tied because there really isn't anything more that he could do with the way it's written. So I guess, I'm right, just requesting that we get some kind of ruling that will amend the sections in three point two eight to outlaw the campground camping on vacant lakefront lot. I don't think it's asking a lot, I think it's kind of, to me it's, to me it's like common sense. I just don't, I don't see how anybody, I don't have a problem with campers. I just have the problem that we have spent a lot of money and everybody around us has spent a lot of money to get a lakefront home, we have to pay high taxes, but we have a quality of life that we enjoy with peace and quiet, the usefulness of the lake. And now I've got campground chatter, I've got, I don't know when they're gonna roll in, one of those things. And so, if there's any way that you can, I know you're working on the residential lakefront zoning and I don't know where you're at with that or how far you're into that, but I would ask like today if there's anything that you guys can do to help us so this doesn't continue down into this. So I don't know if, when they're gonna come back next, and I really don't think, I just don't think it's, I, I just don't think it's uh, a good idea to have that happen. It would be no problem if they had their house there and they had a camper behind it or anything. I, I understand that, but it's the fact that I've got a campground atmosphere on a lot that I don't know what they pay for, how much they pay taxes on, but I know one thing. If I was to ever go sell my home tomorrow and that camper's on the next lot next to me, I am not gonna get what I'm, I wanna get. And I got some extra pictures that I took, that we sent you guys pictures before and Dave has seen the property, but we kind of wanted to show, you know, where our, this was our boat, so there's that tree right there, that's almost a lot lot. So the trailer sits there, we've taken pictures of, I mean, he came in with, he has his truck, his trailer. He's right up on, this is Frost's house right there, he's right up on like the edge before the, before the, the, the land goes down to the lakefront, so he's sitting right on there. Just want you guys to understand, this is like, I would never complain about anything, but for this to just show up out of clear blue sky has been, this is a picnic table. You know, I don't know how you would feel about it and I hope you feel the same way, but that's what we're asking for. We're asking for help so, so we don't have to have this happen again. We wanna be good neighbors, we just want to have this not happen, this situation. Because for him, he can't support it, he can't do any kind of zoning uh, enforcement because we're under a three point two eight storage of RV. And I really think, um, if there's anything you can do to amend like that section and just take the part about RV camping or put RV camping in there and take it out so they can't do it, it would sure bring our house back to being a home. Thank you.
So with that, Ron explained what he has there, I think um, we'll have to go into our lakefront, uh, as far as old business, lakefront residential ordinance that we've been working on. I did give you all a couple other emails that I received today. Uh, one from Jenny Towne, talking about lakefront property, it's a real concern. It could, this could become a real concern, um, unless we address lakefront property ordinance. Um, I know that the instance is not allowed by Douglas Township, there must be a home on a property for someone to camp in there. I'd further like to see the stick lakes, it must be in the rear of the property in case lakefront wouldn't move. That could be, uh, couldn't be placed on a lakefront edge, uh, meaning the roadside. I understand there is not a lot of vacant lakefronts, but for some, this could become a real issue. So that's Jenny's email I received. Greg Sims, I received uh, uh, today. Um, I'd wanna submit some pictures from a neighbor, from my neighbor's shed that is on the waterside of a lake. I hear that this is, uh, had come up at previous meetings and wanted to submit a few pictures from our living room, deck and deck. Uh, we do have amazing, we do have amazing neighbors, but our views really cut short uh, from their shed. I would even like to, would even be okay if it was moved back between the two houses. Uh, if you know our permission, I am available. So this particular individual, and he's on Berkshire Drive, which I take it as Townline?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not Lake Forest. That's the only two that we have.
So this particular individual, um, is talking about a shed that's on the, the lakefront versus the, the side or the rear part of the lot. So again, we're talking about lakefront uh, ordinance, um, and I think this stuff uh, comes right in with what we're talking about, so. The other one I sent to was uh, from Susan Redmacher, if I'm saying that right? Um, which I think is a, a neighbor of.
That's my neighbor, if you're looking at the lake to the right, he's actually ninety four years old, Bud. He has been Bud Frost, he's lived on that lake since I think the seventies. And uh, in fact, they wouldn't even, uh, that's his daughter that wrote that. They, they don't even wanna tell him about this because they're afraid it'll just upset him too much.
So where the shed is, where the camper is, this is the house to the other side of that, to the, to the east. And it says, I'm right on behalf of the Frost family to express the concern about a fifth wheel trailer being parked on Townline Lakefront next to our cottage. Now this says fifth wheel, so I don't know if this is something different than a camper that um, Ron shared the pictures with, but. Um, my dad Frank Frost is the owner of the cottage at sixteen ninety two, located in Tame Shop Township. It's gotta be the same camper.
Yeah.
Um, our biggest um, concern is a devaluation of a lakefront home. This is a campground area located directly across the street from where the campers can park. Do you not feel that this isn't, uh, is in the intentions of the zoning ordinance and allow campers to park on an extended amount of time without a sewer or a water hookup? This particular lot has a shed and a boat lift sitting on the property. The issue with the, the issue with the trailer that came in late summer of twenty twenty four um, is the three point two eight zoning ordinance. Our rate cap concerns is devaluation of lakefront property, sewer water hookup, noise of a generator, property taxes. How are taxes assessed fairly on this property? So. I think that's all the ones I had with those for.
Phil, did you receive the one I sent to you? Did it come in?
Um, with the pictures?
No, there was one from my neighbor down the street, I said, uh, it's from Brian Young.
Oh, yep, alright. So, um, this is from, as, as Ron said, this is from Brian Young, who also lives on, on Townline Lake. So here's Brian's commission, this was a letter wrote on September eleventh. Looks like, just a second. Um, my name is Brian Young, I live a few doors down from the Buckholz. On Cutler Road on Townline Lake, I'm a resident of Cato Township. I'm running in regards to an issue allowing lake waterfront property to be used as RV camping spot for a certain period of time in our neighborhood according to our zoning guidelines. Owning a beautiful waterfront property and a house on a property is a dream come true. I believe that our property and house values are a sense of pride and we need to maintain the integrity of our waterfront and neighborhood for future generations. Our properties are one of our biggest investments and having an ordinance, having this ordinance could uh, depreciate the waterfront property. That along with the safety, cleanliness and the pride of waterfront property street could possibly diminish. I'm in support of uh, the Buckholz concern and would like the commission to possibly look into reevaluating the current zoning ordinance usage on Townline Lake. Thank you for taking the time and understanding our concern on this really important lakefront property situation. For, for contacting me, it's convenient to discuss this very important matter. Thanks again, Brian Young, so. So those are the, the, the concerns that um, are in front of us. With that being said, um, I wanna continue to work on our lakefront residential district. Um, it's a district that we added when we redid our master plan, correct? And it was, it's our goal obviously to add this in our ordinance book, so. Discussion, I guess. Y'all have a copy of the latest update? We don't have campground anywhere near for, permitted or special point of view. In our lakefront?
Mm-hmm.
Which I don't think we would allow anyway, just for the concerns that are being brought up. I know that there's a lot on my lake that was up for lease, minimum of six months and my concern with that is very similar. Granted, it's not gonna deevaluate too much property where it's located, but now there's a camper and a dock and they don't have any septic or water there, so what are they doing with their, their groundwater? Camper hasn't moved off the property since June. But, being said, there's nothing in our ordinance, there's nothing really ever, we got to address some concerns to be able to tell them that they can't do that. And I know the, the one word that you used was undeveloped. And I know if we say that undeveloped lots that are vacant, camping's not permitted, what stops somebody from tapping a well, putting a septic in and parking a camper on it? Is that the line that we say or do we say no temporarily if you're building a dwelling? That's already in our ordinance, so we have some definite things to look at. Anybody else? Leslie, can we get some, welcome.
Welcome, yeah, sorry for the delay.
You're good.
I was coming from a meeting, I'm due and traffic, so.
What do other, um, can you give us some advice on what other uh, townships do when it comes to lakefront camping?
So typically, this would be treated similar in a situation to what Quina was mentioning where you might have a temporary use for it, um, so you, you would require a temporary use permit for specific circumstances, so for example, if someone's building their home on the property or there was some sort of natural disaster like a flood or a fire that required, um, you know, temporary dwellings, uh, sort of, um, amenities in order to address that. Um, in some communities where they want a little bit more leniency, they may allow it irrespective of any extenuating circumstances, but only for a limited period of time, like a week or, you know, maybe up to thirty days or something like that, but still requiring uh, a take, obtaining a permit from the zoning administrator. Um, usually it's considered an accessory use on land, not the principal use. So, that's just kind of how we've seen it in the past. You could limit it to undeveloped land, uh, but I would recommend you probably want to define what that means and, you know, address the circum, the situation if someone were to, um, you know, try to skirt the rules by trying to fit themselves within the definition of what is undeveloped or not.
Okay.
And then of course have, I would, I would account for certain regulations um, that they would have need to comply with in order to obtain the permit, to protect the lake. You know, in terms of, uh, you know, trash and, um, facilities and whatnot to prevent any blight. prevent any blight or contamination into the lake or on the neighboring properties.
Question about that, what would stop, not, not that it would be, that, that's what's being brought up because it's a trailer, a camper trailer designed for camping, what stops people from tent camping on their own property, on a lakefront? Nothing really? I mean, I, I, that'd be even something that you could regulate at a commission level?
You could, you could regulate it, I've never encountered it because I don't think people typically stay in tents for that long. Or they never know.
Never temporary thing, you know, holiday weekend or something?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, so like, for this, before we do anything further with the lakefront residential in special and uses, we could put a number nine and say temporary camping permitted and then put a set of guidelines that would allow them. So then anything that's not within that parameters of temporary camping for, you know, loss of use of your house or if you're building a house and it's permitted through us, any other use of that would then be in violation of our ordinance. And saying undeveloped, I guess, I don't know how the commission would feel about what?
Or vacant, something.
Undeveloped would mean, and then does that mean that somebody feels well-inseptic and gets power to it? Then they're no longer undeveloped, so the camper can stay there indefinitely or still have a term limit on that?
Because some, and some of these issues may involve the health department as well. I've had situations in the past where you gotta, somebody living in an RV on a property that's not connected, you know, that, they're using, going outside for a lot of the better term and sometimes the health department will get involved in that, especially if there is a body of water um, on the property or neighboring a property that could be impacted by that. So, that's another factor, you know, that we need to consider requiring as a condition, you know, obtaining approval, any necessary approvals from the health department as well, kind of health department.
Cause we do have a lot on Lake Forest that, um, somebody bought it, they had two lots on the lakeside and a lot across the street. They brought in a ton of sand, built a concrete patio, put a shed on it, full well-inseptic drain field across the road. And now there's a, a fifth-wheel trailer sitting there that he uses in the summer, which at that point, yes, it looks like a trailer sitting there, but it's not blocking anybody's view. He uses it at his leisure and it has a well-inseptic and it's ready for a home. I, I don't think, he has plans to build a home anytime soon, but I mean, it's, you could sell that property tomorrow and allow us on a, pretty quick and easy. But, that doesn't bother me as much as the camper sitting in the lot next to him that has nothing that the people don't, aren't, I don't know who leased it and who put their trailer there, but I'm more concerned with where their sewage is going, so.
Anybody?
Yeah, and that may have, I mean, you have provisions in your ordinance just as it relates to dwelling ordinance.